Just as we are enthusiastic about their participation. Leave it alone, people. Okay, we want to try and be as respectful as possible of everybody's opinions, whether or not you choose to agree with them.
I'm listening.
We are going to move on to the next speaker.
I'm listening to everyone's opinions and then five members of this council.
Mary Kimmel. Alder, you are out of order, sir. Please be quiet.
We can listen respectfully.
Mary Kimmel, you are up.
Hey.
Alderman, you are also out of order.
Yep, I am.
Proceed.
Oh, I expected a row from these people, not you guys.
Mary, please continue.
Yes, sir. All right. I have always believed if you object or have a problem with something that you should come up with a solution. Obviously, everybody here says stay with four lanes. Okay. Somewhere over the last two or three years, when I was reading about this, someone suggested that they make the sidewalk a little bit wider. Okay, that's going to go a little bit into people's property, but, you know, another foot wider. That gives more room for bikers and pedestrians on the sidewalk. Suggestion. All right, absolutely nobody has talked about that roundabout. That just boggles my mind. And this little piece of paper here says that on Fourth Avenue where they're proposing the roundabout, that there are 650 pedestrians per day that go through that intersection. That's a lot of walking back and forth. I cannot phantom in my head how a pedestrian walks through an intersection where the traffic's never stops. You know, there's no stop sign, there's no stoplight, there's no nothing, you know. The traffic's coming, you've got to stand there and wait forever. I'm thinking they'd have to wait longer than if there was a stoplight. You know, they complain about, well, you've got to sit there and wait for a stoplight. Well, this way, there's none. Okay, yeah, okay, let's see here. Yes, long story short, yeah, I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Larson.
Robert Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue. First thing I want to say is thank you for allowing the public to have comments. A lot of boards aren't doing that lately. People are saying Business 51, four lanes, and no roundabout to me. If you want to fix Division and Fourth Avenue, put a left turn signal. Pretty simple. That's where your problem is. You're having problems when people are turning. Let the people decide on the four lanes or two lanes. Have a binding referendum coming this spring, summer, or spring, April 2022. Not an advisory. A binding referendum on do the people want four lanes or two, or do they want bike lanes or none? Put it on a referendum. Let we, the people, decide. Here's some history. A few years back, Mayor Gary Westcott and the city council took $6 million in assumed ownership of Business 51. And now we're going to pay for it. Because we're Plover, their $38 million was paid by the state of Wisconsin, this $49 million is going to come out of the taxpayers from bad decisions. In 1960, the population of Stevens Point was around 18,000 people. Our mayor and city council changed the roads from two lanes to four because of the growing population. Today, we're almost 27,000, and you're considering going back from four to two. It doesn't make sense to go backwards. If you're so concerned about bicycle lanes, make the sidewalks bigger. Per our mayor, it is legal to ride on the sidewalk. Consider this, our winter cuts. Bike lanes by seven or eight months is about as much as you can use them. It's safe to, is it safe to have bicycle lanes running between two car lanes? I don't think it is. A lot of the bike lanes in the winter, if you go by them, they're full of snow from One more thing, when we have garbage and recycle pickup and we're down to one lane, what happens? Is all the traffic back up waiting for the garbage and recycle? Did anybody think about that? I'm against reducing Business 51 from two lanes, from four lanes to two lanes. I also say put a left turn signal at Fourth Avenue, Division Street. That will take care of your problems. So I could say some other things, but there's a lot of people ahead and behind me. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Art Greco.
He's in overflow, mayor.
There's a bunch of people there, so we'll be patient and wait.
I thought I was a little more fluid in the hips, but it didn't seem like it when I'm getting up, when I got up. Art Greco, 5459 Oakwood Lane and a property owner at 2957 Church Street where Aspiris is now. Aspiris might be happy that there's a single lane. It might be easier for some of the elderly to get out. But as a business owner and a future value of that property, I am speaking against the four, a four lane down to two lane. It's a business corridor. That's why it's named Business 51. Taking it backwards to suit whose needs. A yes vote would only indicate to me that there is an ulterior thought where you want businesses to go and you want this to close down. You're going to choke this off and you're going to kill it. Now, I said a yes vote. I want you to think of that. If bike lanes, I've lived on Water Street and I've lived on Second Street north a final score. You have to go around the biker in oncoming traffic. Now take Managua, 51, four lanes, down to two lanes, one way. And anybody going to Managua notices what happens to the traffic and the insane people who are trying to pass. I think we're headed in the wrong direction, especially given the fact it's a business corridor. Property values and businesses are not going to survive. We're trying to come out of a pandemic, which we don't seem to be coming out of. On top of that, we're going to make decisions like this? I think we need to rethink it. We have a lot of people here that have been business people that are saying, listen, I haven't heard about this vote, I haven't heard about, I didn't. I read a lot. I'm thinking, where the hell was I? Really, seriously? You want to know what it was? It's called 18 months of COVID. I wasn't, my head's not, my first thought isn't, oh my gosh, my, 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 my property. My first thought was, how the hell am I going to get my kids to get an education during a pandemic? On top of that, I'm a teacher. I teach business. Number one thing we teach in business is entrepreneurship and small business is going to be the backbone of a community. Four lanes to two lanes is going to kill that. I'm asking you to think of that, and I really appreciate your time for allowing me to come and share my thoughts and hopefully persuade you to go against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Brown.
Tom Brown, 317 Sixth Avenue. As both a taxpayer and a longtime resident of the city, I believe the proposed alternative is a good one and should be adopted by the common council. It's a good design response to the overwhelming and longstanding need for vehicular, pedestrian, and bicyclist safety in this important corridor. I attended the public information meeting in September 2020, as well as this past March and in July, both the virtual meetings on Zoom and the in-person meetings. And, you know, if people didn't know about them, I don't know what to say about that, but I did. Every question that I had about the different alternatives was answered clearly with the reasoning behind the different options. I may not have liked all the answers I received or some of the specific elements of those design alternatives, but everything was carefully explained, documented, and it made sense. I also downloaded and carefully read all of the project presentation and reference materials that were posted on the website. I was impressed with the thoroughness and clarity of these presentations and background materials. I applaud the city and its consultants, ACOM, for what appeared to be, to be about the most transparent public input process I've ever seen on any public project in this city in my 40-some years of living here. For too long, Division and Church Streets have been, in my opinion, an intimidating and somewhat dangerous barrier dividing our community. Nothing about this corridor, save the older historic homes and the local businesses, is particularly memorable, appealing, or pedestrian-friendly. The proposed design before us provides a real opportunity to remake Stevens Point's section of Business 51 into something to be truly proud of aesthetically. The wide grassy terraces between the sidewalk and the traffic lanes, the planted medians where space is allowed, and the pedestrian islands at crossings are all badly needed. These design elements will help Stevens Point live up to its designation as a Tree City USA and foster a livable community attractive to both residents and newcomers alike. While I'm glad that the proposal includes bike lanes north of Fourth Avenue and south of the underpass, I also appreciate the reasoning behind the fact that they're not included in this intersection. Here, the wider terraces will enhance pedestrian safety and also allow for better snow removal, and that's rightly so. The proposed roundabout at Fourth Avenue will enhance and better control traffic flow at this intersection. It will provide an opportunity for a greener and more pleasing gateway also to the university and for safer pedestrian crossings because there are short, safe places to stop. The traffic studies and comparisons of the various alternatives considered all point to this design being a sound one for Stevens Point. And this street belongs to all of us, not just the businesses along it. The work to evaluate different alternatives has been done. It's time to move forward. I hope all the members of the council agree.
Thank you. Becky Cresson.
First, I want to touch on the idea that I've heard from a lot of people in person here and on media that this is the first they're hearing of this. If people aren't on Facebook, they don't subscribe to certain newspapers, they don't see this stuff. I know you did that mayor minute all through the beginning of COVID, that you were doing it, I think, multiple times a week. Maybe doing something like that for this. Doesn't have to be you necessarily, maybe somebody else to get stuff out on YouTube, stuff that can be shared on other types of social media, whatever it takes. This wasn't out there. On topic, starting with that roundabout, that's insane. For anybody who isn't familiar, they're talking about doing it at Fourth Avenue. This is a busy intersection for university crossing. There are places where a roundabout made, would make sense, but I do got to ask if, if any of you who've driven around the normal busy intersections, roundabouts, you know, an Oshkosh and whatever, have you ever tried walking across one of those? I doubt most people have. I can't even imagine it. I don't care if there's a crosswalk there or not. The normal mind frame of somebody in a busy roundabout, which is what this would be, is you're looking at the traffic in front of you, the traffic aside of you, the traffic behind you, and you're constantly going like this and making split-second decisions. Now you want to add in having to also watch for people that are walking and biking over there, too? If you put a roundabout here, I guarantee you, people are going to get hit. Or to avoid hitting them, people are going to get in accidents. Like, you can't have a roundabout when there's this much pedestrian traffic at that intersection. There's a lot of things about this idea that this, they're crazy. Like the terraces, we keep getting told that we have to have these terraces, it's the safe thing. Well, this is an extension of Whiting and Plover, and their sidewalk cement areas go right up to the edge of the road. It's the same road, the same traffic flow. So there's no reason that can't be done here, and something like that would, would increase the, the size of the sidewalk for the bikes and the pedestrians and what, what the goal is. We don't need, some places, it's five-foot, eight-foot wide terraces. That's unnecessary. Raised medians, sometimes up to 18 feet wide, causing a removal of 56 driveways? That, Kevin was right, the small businesses are going to see such a hit. I personally, if I have to go to Dollar Tree Restaurant, Auto Parts Store, and this goes in, I'm going to go to a different part. I'll go to Highway 10, I'll go Crossroads, I'll go somewhere else. And rather than, and deal with the congestion of this nonsense. So it will hurt all those businesses, and businesses are the heart of the community. They are what make a community either prosper or, or fail. And that should be what our focus is, and this needs to not be decided on by 11 people. It needs to be voted on by the citizens and the property owners. With one of the voting options needs to be different than the tunnel vision of the current options that were currently being presented, because there are other options, and we, the community needs to have the vote, not just 11 people.
Thank you, Becky. Brian Wazella.
Brian Wazella, 717 Washington Avenue. A lot of people here have stolen my thunder with what I was going to talk about. Hitting on a couple of key points, the roundabout at Fourth, I think is a terrible idea, the university there. There's just no way to stop traffic unless you put in lights or warning lights, stoplights, whatever to get the college students across that intersection. That defeats the purpose of a roundabout. You're actually stopping traffic. I like the idea of adding a left turn signal to help those turn the lane and move it, make it bigger, but I think that area is, one number one is a bad design. As Kevin was saying about the small businesses in that area, I'm not going to lie. If it makes it me harder to get someplace, I'll go down Highway 10. I'll go to Cross Road Commons. I will not go to AutoZone, I will not go down and visit him. In fact, I'm looking for a used car. I drove through his lot. It was easy to get to. To take it down to two lanes is just not a good idea. I don't think this plan is a very good idea. Yes, I know we are years into this, but I think a lot of shortsightedness was on the way. I noticed in the plans, there's virtually no plans out there for a four lane. Everything is set to two lanes. It's like your minds are already made up, and this means absolutely nothing. You've said multiple times that you're going to listen to what the people want. The ATV, you listen to what the people want. Overwhelmingly, the people don't want this, but now, we're not going to listen to the people because the people don't know what they're talking about. You can't have it both ways. This is going to, in my opinion, kill business. I am a business owner right now. My business is out on Highway 66. I'm looking for a new office in a few years. And if this road diet goes through, I will not be picking anywhere in that area. I will go out to Cross Road Commons, I will go somewhere else where I can have the traffic, where I can have my insurance business survive and move forward. This, it will not. I urge you to please reconsider this. I urge you to listen to the people like you say you do and reconsider this and vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Kozlowski.
Eileen Kozlowski, 545 Franklin Street. Hey, neighbor. A road is a beautiful thing. It connects us to where we want to go. Roads can be residential or commercial. A business road has no right to pretend to be a residential road. I am, I am in opposition of this business killer plan. Funny that Tori Jennings was touting economic growth. Seems a little hypocritical. We have enough bike lanes. I won't talk about traffic flow because you've heard all of the reasons for that. Four lanes to two lanes kills a lot of traffic. Business killer plan, like I said. I would, I would ask Jorgella how going from four lanes to two lanes will help traffic flow. Bike lanes, I've had enough of that. Had enough of that. I did say before, grew up in the 80s. When I went outside on my bike, when I roller skated outside as a child, I used the sidewalk. They worked perfectly well. I assure you. Sick of roundabouts? Seems a small percentage of the community actually knows how to use them. And I agree with Becky on this one thing. It will cause a lot of accidents. You have a lot of, what, teenagers? What a recipe for disaster just boggles the mind. You will see a lot of problems, problems with that if you put in that roundabout. I think stop signs and lights and sidewalks work just fine. Worked for us growing up, didn't it? So please pay attention to us. Realize that the community and the businesses within it do not want this. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Kalkovin.
I've lived in this city all my life. I'm disgusted. It used to be we made fun of Plover. Plover's running real far ahead of Stevens Point now. It's, and you talk about these, making the streets smaller. I was at this meeting before they did Highway 66, the Stanley Street project. Didn't like it. They did it anyhow. It's a failure. That wasn't enough. They go down Michigan Avenue. Same thing. Now you want to do it to one of the main streets in town. Doesn't make any sense to me. I'm just tired of it. And this, these bicycle lanes supposed to serve a purpose? Yeah, they made the police, the people on bicycles lawless. You see them on the street, they're on the sidewalk, it's hard to drive automobile. I talked to some police about it. And I appreciate the job the police doing in this city. We need them. I brought up this subject, and they said, they were told, leave the people on bicycles alone. What are you guys going to do? Let someone get killed before you start changing things? I'm totally against this Church Street project. It, you know, McDill's got, you know, a better plan than we got. It's, it's nothing but a setback. You heard several good business people here talking. Evidently, you know everything, business people don't. I'm just getting sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Frostman. Larry, before you get up there, I'm going to take 30 seconds.
Oh, sure. I'm me, right?
No, no, go ahead, walk up there. No, I apologize for this, but the older persons are right to a certain extent. We don't need the applause, we don't need the comments, but I'm off, sir, sir, enough. Thank you. I know for many of you, it's your first time here. It's your first time participating in a government meeting. We do need to maintain a certain sense of decorum. That's the way it should be. But because most of you are new, and I can tell you're very passionate about whatever item it is that you're talking about, I've been pretty lax in that. I would ask that you keep it to a minimum, to not, to, to this extent, it has not interfered with the flow. I call the name, the people still come up here, but it's really not necessary. I understand and appreciate your enthusiasm, and we do want to hear from you. I appreciate everybody that shows up tonight, but we do need to try and maintain some decorum. So if we could keep that to a minimum, I would appreciate it. Larry, you are up, sir.
Larry Frostman, 1757 College Avenue. Oh, I've been in Stevens Point for about 60 years. First thing I want to say, first thing I want to tell you a little bit of history. When this country was started, we had horses. Second, the bicycles came next. Then the cars came. So the horses and the bikes kind of got pushed aside. Now the bikes want their rights back. What about the horse people? If I go buy a horse, can I ride my horse down Church Street? You're going to make a lane for me? It sounds stupid, but you're asking for equity for everyone. Okay, make the sidewalks wider. We could ride our bikes on sidewalks. I've done it all my life. Becky, Kevin both stole my thunder with what I was going to talk about. You know, the same thing. The other thing, just reminder, you people work for us. And that binding referendum on this whole project would be the best thing you could do. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And just for the record, horses are allowed to use a full lane of traffic if they need to. Steven, and I apologize, Abbott, I believe? Steven Abbott? Maybe that's in the overflow room. Steven Abbott? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Steve Abbott, 28, 28 Blaine Street.
You don't need to lean into it, sir. They pick it up pretty good. You're.
Fair enough. Well, we all know that the weakest link is how a chain is, you know, the strength of a chain, right? Well, the slowest vehicle on the road is generally what, how the traffic's going to flow, right? Well, I've got, you know, almost 3 million miles as a commercial motor vehicle driver. I own my own trucking company. And you, if you come in, and that's Business 51, like the one gentleman said about the, the garbage trucks, right? In this day and age where people are playing on their phones, not using their turn signals, sooner or later, there's going to be, somebody's going to rear end somebody, turning in. And then where everybody's going to go, like some other, like I believe Mr. Medine said, and the other gentleman that was against the ATV, UTV issue, they go down from the trains, they go through their neighborhood, and they go ripping around this net. What do you think they're going to be doing on all these secondary roads? Not even a block off is a school on Blaine, where, about a block where I live. What do you think's going to happen? I already see this stuff. People go ripping down our, the back alley and everything else. That's what's going to happen. And I hear about safety all year on Stanley Street? Give me a break. You know, when you've got a car turning left, and you're getting on the brakes, and you're 13-6 because you're going to pick up a load at the mill, and somebody behind you can't wait to get around you, they go around you on the left and almost T-bone the car? You don't know all the, all the stuff that we see out there. That's still a commercial road. That's business. Now, I understand that where Pastory comes in, yeah, that needs to get redone a little bit, however you figure that out, and where the realignment of the next one down, I understand all that. That needs to be done, especially that, that area, because the school and this and that, when you come off and everything else like that, it's really screwed up. That needs to get done. But just putting this down to two lanes? This is so regressive. This is literally just packing traffic in. And every, and when I remember when I was eight years old, 16 years old, riding my bike in this town, riding around because that's all you could do, nobody rode on the main drags because we didn't want to get hit. Because even if we were in the right and they were in the wrong, and we had the law on our side, the laws of physics weren't on our side. You know, hmm, would I be, you know, suck up your pride or maybe get a $2 million settlement from getting hit and be paralyzed the rest of your life? What would you rather have? You take the side roads and the secondary roads, leave the traffic there, and with everybody with GPS, everybody's going to go, oh, it's three minutes, quicker this way, this road, this road, this road, this road, this road. People are going to start blowing stop signs, people are going to start doing this. Stuff, bad stuff's going to happen. Pressure's got to go somewhere. It's the flow of traffic. And you take the pressure off, the big pressure relief here, and you condense it down, it's going to go everywhere else.
He's the man you want there.
No!
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. Thank you. Beth McBride.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, council. My name is Beth McBride. I'm the owner of Pure Clean Restoration Professionals. We are located at 3288 Church Street, and we are against the Business 51 proposal. The impact on the businesses along the proposed area is incredibly negative. Don't get me wrong, I feel that the community is open to change. However, it needs to be well thought out for the benefit of all, not a plan that benefits only a few. We are a growing community, and we need to grow smart. Restricting traffic and creating a bottleneck from a recently enlarged street is not planning for growth. How does reducing the flow of a busy street of a growing community ensure efficient traffic flow? How will emergency vehicles get through? Pedestrians and bicyclists will not have a safe area for operation when forced into a congested roadway. I welcome an explanation of the logic behind this. Additionally, I feel that the notices of this plan were incredibly ambiguous. I feel that there has not been transparency. I did have a Stevens Point representative come into my business to talk about upgraded utilities, however, they made no mention of the road proposal. Let's start with closing off the driveways. It is the responsibility of the businesses to offer easy and convenient access to their establishments for their customers. This access is crucial to the success of these businesses. Taking away these driveways reduces exposure, accessibility, and ultimately, the prosperity of the business. If the environment is congested and hazardous, customers are less likely to visit my business and all other businesses along this stretch. Rerouting traffic through the parking lots of other businesses poses a safety hazard. In my business alone, we have had to install speed bumps and street signs that indicate a private drive. The cars that would cut through our lot were The cars that would cut through our lot were driving at speeds in excess of 40 miles per hour. There have been many times where we have had near collisions with vehicles and pedestrians. It is a parking lot for my private business. It is not a public road. Who will be responsible for the care and upkeep? The snow plowing, the maintenance? Will there be a tax credit? My business also utilizes the open space in our parking lot for training and storage of customers' personal items, as well as community events like this. Here's our training, here's our community event. Opening our lot to the public will greatly reduce or simply eliminate the ability to provide these opportunities to our employees and to our community. Then we come to the ultimate consequence for business and landowners in the proposed stretch. The devaluing of the property. If you take away the success of the business, you take away the value of it and the land value. This will have a negative impact on the community and its economy. The location, lot size, and accessibility was the main attraction to me and my husband when purchasing our building for our business. Had we been made aware of such a proposal, we would have considered another location. My solution is that we work together. Work together with the business owners along this stretch for a, for a solution that benefits all, the city, the businesses, and the community. I strongly urge you to vote no for this proposal, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Keith Kadruski, and I'm not 100% sure I have this right.
I want right.
It was right? Okay, well, I have not, a number four non-agenda item, but I added in the stack of four key. Gotcha.
All right, Keith Kadruski, 1536 Water Street. I think everybody kind of proved my point about what I started out with the non-agenda, about how seriously insane this idea is. So a lot of friends here, business owners, who are my friends, business owners who I met today. You guys are crushing them, and it's quite intentional, in my opinion. Totally a socialist dream come true to destroy small businesses, which seems to be a mantra of a few, but off on another tangent there. The, the roundabout at Fourth Avenue, one lane with that amount of traffic will be literally non-stop cars. They will never get across. It, it's... Somebody's gotta explain that. Maybe the lady who said two lanes of traffic will move faster than four lanes. I hope she wasn't a math teacher, that's all I can say. So with that, before the meeting, Mayor told me you wanted us to be heard. You wanted us to be heard. If you didn't, I'm sure you heard them all. Now the question is, are you listening to them all? So with that, put on a referendum. Let the people decide, not you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Todd Uier, who is registered in favor, but is choosing not to speak. I want to make sure that's in the record. And we have Phil Janowski. Phil, you checked both boxes, speaking in favor of and against.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Kind of a question here. My, one of my main concerns, this is Phil Janowski, I actually do not live in the city of Stevens Point, but we do use the road. And granted, it's one of these, uh, some of these other people are saying that the city was 18,000 and grew to 26, 27, whatever it is. They have to realize it's a metropolitan area and that everybody uses the city from the outside. So I basically am therefore against, um, making this into a two-lane road. And when this project does happen, I would most certainly hope that the nomenclature of Business 51 stays on because the road changes street names three different times. It starts off as Division Street, Church Street, and morphs into Post Road as it goes into Plover and Whiting. And I am in favor of, you know, these businesses are really gonna take it. And personally, I myself, I use the interstate as much as I can. I just go up to Casper Road, down the interstate, and do everything. I very rarely go through town because it's, it's getting insane driving. And if they're gonna make these into two-lane roads, that's less palatable for me to go like to his business or his, you know, these other ones. And then furthermore, like the gentleman that runs Hardee's, all right, if I want to come from the other way, how are you gonna turn in if there's only one way to turn in there? You gotta go all the way back around, or, you know, coming here off the north side, say like I'm coming from the north, go to Taco Bell, it's gonna be too late, I had to go around the roundabout and go back around? I don't think that's gonna, that's gonna be very detrimental to these businesses. I think you guys should do some homework on this and factor in the, the business aspects of this too. And I myself am a bicycle rider, and I think that we should be paying fees to ride the bicycles. You gotta pay to play. And I personally wouldn't have a problem with putting like a six-foot sidewalk in or just buying like eight feet on each side of the existing roadway and call it as that. I think that would be functional. End of discussion.
Thank you. Um, I have Kevin McBride, who registered against but chose not to speak. So that's in the record. And waiting patiently, uh, still, Allison, you're up.
Allison Burr, 1616 Division. I've lived in this city for seven years, and I recently bought my house on Division Street. During my time as university student, getting to class, I always dreaded traveling along, crossing Division Street. It felt like a death trap. When they put in the lights at the Franklin intersection, I thought things would be easier. But trying to stop four lanes of traffic without actual stoplights is pretty hit or miss. No pun intended. Um, and we, and I've seen pretty close calls, either trying to cross the street myself or being in my vehicle and the person next to me doesn't stop. As a resident homeowner, I still feel the same way. I see people fly past my house going 10 to 15 miles over the speed limit while there's kids in the front yard across the street. When you're driving 20 feet away from someone's home, you, there's no need to be going 40 miles an hour. And I know they're going 40 miles an hour because I put the little speed sign up, and I saw it. So yes, I'm in big favor of the proposed changes for Business 51, Business 51. Sure, it might take an extra four minutes to travel the whole three-mile stretch, but if it prevents accidents and injuries, and is all-around safer for everyone in property, I don't think that's a big of a price to pay. And I say property because a couple blocks down, someone's fence got ran into. And if they were probably going 25 mile an hour speed limit, might not have happened. Yes, that's it. Short and sweet. Thanks.
Thanks, Allison. Next up, Mark Christensen. That was Mr. Bangs' fence, by the way.
I do want to just kind of reiterate my comments that I, I made to the Public Works this past week. I have had ongoing opportunities to, to get information on all of this. I think we all have. I received information in the mail, postcards notifying me of, of various opportunities. Had a chance to watch a Zoom informational meeting. Had a chance to attend the public hearing of it, Pacelli. Very, very helpful. AECOM representatives were there. I did have some questions on some of the things and what they were doing and why they were doing it. It was very helpful for me personally to be able to, to communicate directly with them and get their, their input and get their thoughts of why they were looking at all the different things. And it wasn't just one, they had looked at a number of different alternatives. I was very impressed with their objective rankings. And I, I know in the handouts that, that we all received this evening, you could see how each of the different alternatives were ranked in all of 15 different areas in order to come up with why they were doing what they were doing. None of it has been by happenstance. It's all been based on, on very solid rationale, I think, so. I guess, I, I think there's still some tweaking that could be done. I think it could still be improved. But the overall proposal and the alternatives that I see, I, I guess I would be in favor of, so.
Thank you. Next up, someone was, who was here in person, but when it started raining, they decided to go home. Trevor Rourke.
Hello, hello? Check, check, one, two.
You're on.
All right, thanks. Trevor Rourke, 601 Washington Avenue. First, I want to say thank you to engineering firm AECOM and city staff and public officials for all the time that went into the Business 51 public process and the preliminary, preliminary design alternatives we're looking at tonight. Uh, it's been really impressive. Second, I'd like to review the data and the facts about the project. According to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the traffic on Business 51 has declined from 2005 until 2017, which is the extent of this study. From 13,700 to 12,300 automobiles per day. The upper threshold used by the Federal Highway Administration to recommend converting a roadway like our Business 51 from four lanes to three is 20,000 automobiles today. AECOM used traffic modeling and a generous growth rate of 0.5% to suggest that by 2045, we might see traffic between 10,300 to about 15,700 automobiles per day. This is still far below that 20,000 automobile per day threshold that traffic engineers use at the US DOT. Further, US Census just revealed to us that Stevens Point dropped in population over the last 10 years by more than 1,000 people. So with this data in mind, and with street engineering professionals recommending, and tonight, the Business 51 alternatives basically are a good candidate for a four-to-three lane conversion. Safety, I bet there's a lot of people here tonight. Um, I was just there, but a lot of people in the meeting room that avoid blocking law on Division because it doesn't feel safe. I bet crossing on foot feels very uncomfortable as well. Some people I've talked to even avoid driving on Division Street because it feels dangerous. Um, I'm actually one of those people and have been for over 20 years. This kind of fear makes it hard to access businesses on the corridor, and it doesn't really have to stay this way. Let's look at the numbers again. So according to AECOM, Business 51 north of Ellis Street has a higher crash rate than 95% of streets in similar design throughout Wisconsin. So worse than 95% of similar roads. That is not good, of course. And it's a problem. Good way to fix this is this four-to-three safety conversion we're talking about tonight, uh, the basic design being represented. This is primarily because it slows down traffic to the speed limit, reduces the crash points, and increases awareness of other roadway users. According to the US DOT, studies have shown that four-to-three safety conversions, also known as road diets, reduce the total number of crashes by about a third. According to AECOM's calculations, crashes on Business 51 between 2015 and 2019 cost our community about $10.3 million. Business 51 is dangerous, and this danger is expensive. Thousands of road diets like this, Business 51 proposal tonight, have been successfully completed nationwide, according to AARP. And some of these are in Wisconsin, including Superior, Barron, Wausau, Eclair, Milwaukee, Acros, Tomahawk, Oshkosh, River Falls, and Rice Lake. Plus, some of these roadways actually have thousands more automobiles per day than Business 51. Excuse me. Regarding the proposed roundabout, property acquisition would actually happen in any case, whether it's a stoplight or roundabout at that intersection. AECOM already presented this. Also, the Federal Highway Administration designated roundabouts as one of nine proven safety countermeasures. A few of the benefits: fewer crashes, about 90% fewer fatalities, 75% fewer injuries, 10 to 12, excuse me, 10 to 40% fewer pedestrian and bicycle crashes, 30 to 50% increase in traffic flow for the intersection since there's less delay waiting in a stoplight. They also reduce pollution, reduce noise, reduce fuel consumption, and save money. There's no cost for traffic signals and yearly maintenance, and the intersection still operates in power outages because, um, there's no signals there and no police needed to direct traffic. So the current proposal for Business 51 is safer, cheaper, more efficient for all users, and would allow more people from ages 80 to eight to access businesses and homes than keeping the roadway four lanes. As a member of the stakeholders group, I attended all the stakeholder meetings and all the public input sessions, and have reviewed all the materials put forth by AECOM and our Department of Public Works. The recommended design approved by the Board of Public Works last week, which is what we see tonight, is what's best for Stevens Point. Please vote to accept the recommendations as presented by AECOM. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Heidi Oberstadt. I think Heidi was in the overflow room, but I saw Heidi join remotely. I don't know where, who that Heidi is. Heidi Oberstadt? Orin, is there anybody coming from the overflow room that way? Last call, Heidi Oberstadt.
Heidi Cole.
Was that her? I'm sorry, uh, did you say Heidi Cole? I'm gonna put it at the bottom of the stack, and we'll keep going. Joe Sizer.
They're still doing. Joe Sizer, 317 Sixth Avenue. Here are four features that I appreciate about the Business 51 reconstruction. There will be a through lane that, um, that continues, and the travel continues unimpeded. Number two, there will be turn lanes so drivers don't have to wait for people to turn. Three, there will be several entryways to Division from the university at Fourth Avenue and at, at the new Sixth Avenue extended. And this will be good for businesses, at least on that area of, um, of Division. There will be sidewalks and terraces wide enough for trees and plantings. Such places will allow for more water infiltration, less stormwater runoff. And the shade trees will make it cooler, reducing the heat island effect of cities with a lot of asphalt and cement. I think that this will be a corridor that works, and that we will continue to use and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert LeBlanc.
I heard a lot of good pros and cons, especially from the DOT guy. Uh, my business is on, uh, corner of Church and Nebo. It's been there since, uh, my dad started business 1962. So I can say that I'm probably the oldest person here to be at one business. I worked for 57 years. Where most of the council members, I don't think anyone's 60 years old, so. I've seen it go from a cow trail, because my mom and dad lived downtown Stevens Point. She fought my dad not to buy it. Because it was a cow trail from the railroad tracks, the underpass to Plover. I look, it has really grown, prospered, cops, uh, Coopers, flat offs. Lot of good independent family-owned businesses, which will be taken away. And I don't, I don't care if it's a cow path, uh, four-lane, six-lane, two-lane. I want to be able to make a living. And right now, I have two driveways, one I share with the car wash, which is across from Walgreens. And I have an entrance. I would lose both of those. So basically, they'd have to come in by the car wash's exit to get into my establishment and back out, or that would not work. So I hope, uh, and none of the council members I look as customers, so I can sway their vote. But I would hope they would vote no. Because we've been paying taxes for 60 years, and I want to just have a chance to make a living.
Thank you, sir. Matt Discher. Matt Discher? Orin, you want to be in my eyes again? Nothing? Okay, I'm gonna move that one to the bottom of the stack also. I know he was here earlier. I know he was here earlier, may have left already. Next up, Barry Flatoff? Barry Flatoff?
Didn't you already speak?
I'm here to represent my brother.
No. Thank you. Craig Tesh.
My name is Craig R. Tesh. I live at 1100 Front Neck, but I have a business on 3133 Church Street. Actually, I have a rental at this point. Of course, what is the, the first question, of course, that you ask is, it's Business 51, what's the purpose? So the purpose is to secure, you know, to serve business and to enhance the flow of traffic. What's the argument against, you know, that you folks are giving towards having just two lanes that'll be safer? But that, to me, that's offset by the frustration of people wanting to get somewhere and encountering slower drivers and right-hand turns until, of course, they stop going there and then businesses, you know, die. So to me, to me, with this, also with the right-hand turns, everybody's talking about how nice it is, you got left-hand turns, you know, won't impede traffic. How about the right-hand turns? I've seen places, right by our business, where the right next door is Arby's, they come like here, if there's only one lane, everybody waits while that one guy makes the turn in. That's something that you'll want to consider. But what ticks me off most, and be honest with you, is this survey that you had here. You know, I read the survey here, and it says here, should, you know, should bicycle lanes be added to Business 51? I mean, the biggest one is for bicycles. After that, the highest one is 20%. You know, should pedestrians improve be priorities over bicycle lanes? Yeah, I could see that. You can have that instead of those bicycle lanes. If you want to have bicycle lanes, you've got Michigan coming up there, you know. It filters right in and it starts right where you've got the end of the four-lane. You could just continue that along right there instead of having it going all the way through. I would not want to ride a bicycle, and whether it's two-lane or four-lane, I would not want to ride a bicycle through 51. I do it at 51, but I'm thinking about people with bringing their kids and stuff like that. I don't think it's a good idea. And I don't see many people doing it other than myself, to be honest with you. So, and the biggest thing I was worried about is you having a shortening as far as access, as far as these businesses are concerned. And I know that in the first plan that you had, you had me sharing a driveway, a drive share with Arby's. That's not going to work. First 18 years of my life, we had two doubles, two older homes, they had apartments up and down, and you had one driveway through. And I can tell you, that type of situation, it causes a lot of disputes and it lowers a lot of property value. And the biggest thing here is the bottom here. It supports shared driveways for businesses. And you, I mean, excuse me, the second and last one here, believe lane reductions. It's the highest percentage of all of them. You know, and when I look at this here, I say to myself, you know, have you folks even looked at this particular survey? Have you even considered it? You know, it makes people like me think that, that, you know, there has to be something else going on here. You know, as far as my concern, the only way to resolve this is to have a referendum. So it's too big of a thing just for this many people to decide, for all the people here that are affected. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Bill Sherrill. I know Bill was here earlier. Did he come online? I see one stores iPhone, I don't know if that's the store. Bill Sherrill, are you out online? Or in the overflow room? Thanks for being in my eyes out there, Orin. I appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna put that to the bottom of the stack again, and we're gonna continue on. Christopher Claysmith. I know he's here.
Hi, Christopher Claysmith, representing myself, resident at 549 Second Street North. First of all, I want to say thank you to you all in AECom for going through and going through all the hard work and research and analysis of the decision that's in front of you all tonight. Trust that all the information that you need to make an informed decision about the health and safety of the community through this process is there for you and that you're hearing a lot of concerns from the business community and the residents here. Speaking in favor of the proposed redesign, because it prioritizes the health and safety of community members who want to be utilizing this corridor for pedestrian traffic, but acknowledging all of the concerns for the businesses that are on the corridor, I just encourage you to go one step further with prioritizing the pedestrian use of the area by redeveloping wisely along the corridor so that there are adequate citizens, residents that are close by that can walk to the businesses to, over the long term, maintain those businesses and hopefully reduce the need for traffic along the road. So that way, it doesn't need to be replaced as often. I think it's a, there's a lot of data to show that as cities prepare themselves for an increased pedestrian use in the community, that traffic flow or traffic counts as they decrease, the roads don't need to be replaced as often, it could save the city finances in the long term. So thank you for prioritizing the health and safety of the community, and I wish you the best of luck in making a decision. Happy Transportation Day.
Thank you. Mary McComb. Says you're in the overflow room, but you're clearly not. Thank you.
Mary McComb, 2100 Elk Street in Stevens Point. I'm speaking in favor of the recommended design for Business 51. I've been following all the discussion on Facebook, and of course, I've been here tonight, and it's, and I appreciate people coming to speak out. Everyone has their own perceptions and their own beliefs, and certainly a lot of fears about this recommended option for Business 51. We all like to trust our own judgment, and we like our routines. We like, we like to keep our routines. We just, change is hard for us. And I know for me, having grown up in Stevens Point and seeing Business 51 and various confirmations throughout the years, it's hard to imagine good old Division Street and Church Street changing. Even though I've looked at all the maps and I've looked at the videos, I've read all the materials, it's still hard to imagine this kind of change and what might happen as a result of this change. And it's clear to me that some of the people who are angry and upset about the proposed option haven't looked at these materials. I'm hearing lots of references to two lanes. Well, it's not two lanes. It's two lanes and a center turn lane or turn options. I also have strong feelings about Business 51. One of the strongest feelings I have is that I don't want this decision to take my feelings into account. I don't want this decision to take anybody's feelings or fears into account. What I like about the process is that the process that came up with the recommendation was not based on anybody's emotions. It was based on data. It was based on best practices. It was based on expertise of not only city staff, elected officials, but the engineers at AECom. AECom engineers, that's their life. They plan roads and things. I urge the council to support this recommended option. It's cheaper than the four-lane option. It takes less property than the four-lane option. It's clearly safer for all users, and it's fairer for all users. So I hope you will vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Joel, you're up. Thanks for waiting. Joel, I'm gonna need you to spell your last name, please.
Okay. My last name is spelled Thede. It's German. I'm from Stevens Point. I live at 2209 Wyatt Avenue. And my main concerns right now, to all the aldermen, my main concerns right now, it is I'm in support of the four lanes, the roundabouts I'm supportive of, but the bike lanes, I'm not. But, but here's the problem I see. If we do fix up the roads, a lot of people are gonna be, the wheel taxes are gonna start going up with the cars. That's, that's where I see what's happening here, Mayor Weesa. So I, I'd like to hear from all the aldermen and see what they think.
You will shortly, Joel. Trust me. Any comments, any additional comments, Joel?
None.
Thank you, sir. All right. Believe it or not, we've hit the bottom of that well. So I'm gonna call one more time for Heidi Oberstadt. Matt Dishar. And Bill Sherrill. Okay, once again, thank you all very much for attending. Even if you had to leave early, I'm sure they had very good reasons for signing up and then leaving early. I appreciate everybody participating, and at this point, I'm gonna ask council for a motion, and then we'll open it up to council discussion. President Johnson.
Like, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Leave.
Second by leak. Now, council discussion. Alder Fischler?
Yes, I really, really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I think it's really important that people be more involved in their city government. This is the most involvement I've seen in, gosh, in my whole term that I've served so far. So I really appreciate everyone being here. I know everyone has a lot of mixed emotions about this project. Some people have had more involvement or have seen more about the project online or, you know, attended some of the discussions. And I know in my district, I represent District 10, we have zero businesses relocating and zero residents relocating on this project. So I just want to let someone know, or let everyone know that. And then on top of it, if, if businesses do have concerns, you can still come to Director Beddun and discuss those. Like, this is not written in stone, and you are not powerless. So I just really want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Zarazua, and then President Johnson.
Thank you. So I agree with Alder Fischler that it's just been great to see how much involvement we've gotten from the community. I've had so many emails, so many phone calls, so many conversations with constituents. It's just great to see how much people are standing up and saying how they feel about this important roadway. I do want to say, like, safety is so important, and I know as people are saying, like, it'll slow down traffic, like, that's the point. We, we have to, we have a moral and a legal obligation as council to ensure that this is a safe way to get through our city. And, you know, yes, we care about aesthetics and, you know, making sure everyone can travel on this road and things like that, but ultimately, like, we open ourselves to legal problems if we don't address the safety concern on this road now that we've identified them. I think, too, what we're seeing here is like a generational shift in different visions of what Stevens Point should look like, and we have that with a lot of our conversations, going, the car-centric versus bike lanes, and it's just, that's a part of our community now. We have a blended community of those two parts that need to figure out how we can live together. We hear a lot about Plover, and I call it the Plover Speedway, like, beautiful, it's great that they did that. But I, I think when we talk about preserving small businesses, we could ask, like, Spadini's or McDill Auto Wrecking or the Bridle Shop. I mean, there are, there was a lot of losses of property that went into developing that over a long period of time, and there's a lot of cost to that. So I think when we talk about, are we affecting small businesses? We're trying to have the least amount of impact as possible so that people aren't having to relocate. And I think the other part is just thanking AECom and our city staff. I mean, they've put a lot into this, and one thing the mayor's told me over and over as I've been older is to listen to our city staff. That's who we pay to make, help us with decisions like these, and that if we don't trust in them, like, you know, that, that is a reflection on who we've chosen to be in those positions. So knowing that this is the recommendation that's coming through AECom and through our Public Works Department, I am in support of this project at this time.
Thank you. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone here. First, thank you, everyone, for being here. It's been a long night. I'm sure all of you are tired. Even if I don't agree with you, I appreciate that you're here. I think people who know me know that that's really who I am. I'm a person who takes in both the choir preaching to me and others. First, I want to thank the incredible, talented city staff for their work on this. As well, I want to thank our expert contractor, AECom, and all of their subs for their tireless efforts to gather information through at least a dozen different types of meetings and other feedback sessions, including letters to stakeholders, email outreach, and social media outreach. They teased out an inordinate amount of data and feedback. They weaved in the goals of council and kept us focused on ensuring we do everything correctly so we qualify for tens of millions of dollars in federal transportation funding. This was no small feat, and the city has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, not because AECom was a low bidder or that Scott Beddun and his staff were the least qualified individuals we could hire, but because they are the best at what they do. I also want to thank everyone who contacted me about the project. While there were some in opposition, there were many in support. To a T, every one of them, I appreciate the civil discourse, except for one person who called me an effing liar. That's not cool, and that's not civil discourse. In my professional life, when faced with an issue or a project, I look to my staff, who are all amazing. I look to my contracted experts and to regulators, because I live in a, work in a highly regulated industry, to help me tease out solutions. In my experience, this has served well to set a successful course, but I always start with a few key goals. For this project, those goals have and always will be, number one, minimize land acquisition in order to preserve not only neighborhoods, but also the tax base. Two, create a corridor for all users while allowing the efficient flow of traffic. Three, ensure that any plan will qualify for federal funding in order to minimize property tax burdens. I think we can all agree, those are goals that we have in common. So how do we do that? Well, our options are do nothing, right? That's always an option. This should be a very familiar option, particularly for those of you who've watched the county kind of not do anything on a justice center for 25 years. It's a very familiar option for us as it relates to the Business 51 corridor, because we've done nothing for over a decade or more. And basically, this is what the council of 2012, 2013, 2014 did, because there was no coalescing around a solution. The decision was cast aside on Business 51, and the federal money, millions of dollars, designated for Business 51, thank you, Dave Obi, for the reconstruction was sent to the Hoover Avenue Overpass, which we all think was a good thing, but it also took traffic off of Business 51 and sent it to Hoover Avenue. If we again take the do-nothing option, then... If we again take the do nothing option, then we are saying to future generations, here, you deal with this. Every 20, 30, 40 something here, out there, this becomes your problem. To me, this is not an option because we know that the pavement is beyond its useful life and the underground infrastructure is also in need of replacement. Do nothing is not what courageous leadership is about and in fact, in my opinion, is cowardly. We could replace with the same. One of the people who contacted me said, just make it like it is. It's worked. That's, that's also an option, right? It is always an option to keep things the same. We clutch what we know. We work to create what's familiar. While this would definitely eliminate the need for land acquisition, it would not meet the goals of a future-focused roadway that is safe for all users and would bump us out of contentious, contention for federal funding. This option, according to AECom's estimate, would be around $39 million. Without federal funding, the entire cost of the project rests on city taxpayers. That means hundreds of dollars in property tax increases for the average property owner. For those with businesses, it means a significant hit to your bottom line. I cannot support an option that could tax people out of their homes or overtax small businesses. And to give you an idea, when I successfully shepherded to successful referendum for the healthcare center to increase the tax levy by $1.4 million, that cost $24.48 per hundred thousand. Now think about 39 million and what that means on your hundred thousand or your mil rate. We could make the corridor a wide four-lane superhighway similar to what we see in Whiting and Plover. That is an option and AECom did explore that. For me, this isn't an option. According to our engineers, this option comes in at a whopping $52 million. That's with all of the realignments that are needed. It is the most expensive, expensive option and would require significant land acquisition, including 12 feet on either side of Church Street and a number of homes along Division Street, quite potentially mine. That right-of-way acquisition is not only expensive, but it moves those properties from the tax rolls to a liability the city must maintain into perpetuity. If the bicycle infrastructure were eliminated, because that seems to be the big issue of contention, there would still need to be right-of-way acquisitions to accommodate, um, the left turn lane islands and the managed stormwater. Just take a drive along Post Road, look east. Buildings are gone and in their place are fa- fairly large stormwater and infiltration basins. Those will remain unusable parcels forever that the Village of Whiting will have to maintain. And I can guarantee they will have to dredge them about every five to 10 years. The dredge material is considered a solid waste and will have to go to a municipal solid waste landfill. Sorry, I always get into garbage one way or the other. While this concept would likely qualify for federal funding, it is far too expensive and it leaves the city with a significant loss of taxable property and massive liability forever. We can accept the recommendations of our experts. While there appears to be a fair amount of discussion about keeping four, Church Street four lane, the fact of the matter is, is it's really not four lanes. Rather, it is a two-lane outer travel lane or two-way outer travel lane. And this was explained to me by a city official who I have a great deal of respect for, who didn't like this option until one day he just thought about it. He goes, it's two travel lanes and two inner turn lanes. The inner turn lanes, he said, are like a hybrid of a travel and a turn lane. And I don't know about you, but, well, Allison lives across the street from me, but turning left on Division Street and on Church Street is a bit of a crapshoot. And I always hold my breath, hoping to avoid being rear-ended. And I cringe when I look in my mirror to see the cars, typically without use of a directional, weaving between lanes to avoid an accident or to speed past the cart, turning car because they cannot wait three seconds. Option four, this option, rethinks the left turn lane from this de facto unsafe system to one where vehicles can safely exit the flow of traffic and queue in a two-way left turn lane, which is commonly referred to as a twiddle. I love the name. The question of safety is addressed. This option is focused on creating broader boulevards, which keep pedestrians safer. I would be very happy not to be 10 inches from moving traffic shoveling my snow. It also provides refuges for pedestrians crossing the corridor. And yes, it creates an opportunity for bicycle infrastructure so they too can be safe. This option hits the safety goals. This option is established with federal standards for multimodal transportation systems and would qualify the city for federal funding, up to 80%, for the project, which is estimated to be $45 million. This option hits the goal of reducing the burden to the taxpayers. And finally, this option requires the least amount of land acquisition for right-of-way and ancillary infrastructure. Even the proposed roundabout at Fourth and Division gobbles up less properties than does a signalized intersection. This option hits the goal of minimizing land acquisition and losing properties from the tax base. While some have indicated concerns about businesses closing because of this option, I recall when Tomahawk decided to make North Fourth Street a safety conversion. The owner of the car dealership along that corridor was dubious at best about this new-fangled idea called a safety conversion. But my friend and former colleague, who I still miss working with, Mike Tolstead, convinced the owner that the data indicated the safety conversion would have a net neutral or a net positive impact to his business. Post implementation, the owner admitted that Mike, the city's engineering expert, was right. We can see the same sort of outcomes just a few hundred feet from where we are right now. Rock and Roll Cafe is getting a new facade and it's looking great. And Mama Mize has become a very popular place along our Stanley Street corridor, even despite COVID. They have done well. I agree with what Mr. Christiansen said is, can we, during the 30%, 30% phase of this design, can we take in some of these concerns? Absolutely. That's what we should be doing. But we don't want to lose this opportunity to bring tens of millions of dollars for this project from federal funding. I don't know about you, but I know what I saw in my W2 this last year. I'd like some of that money, coming back to Stevens Point. We do not want to miss the opportunity to create a safe, multi-system transportation corridor for the 21st century that serves all of the users efficiently and effectively. We do not want to miss the opportunity to maintain the integrity of neighborhoods. We do not want to miss the opportunity to serve the economy with a system that delivers customers safely to every single business on the corridor. We need to stay steadfastly focused on building our resilient future while respecting the past. This is what our experts have delivered to us. Thank you for patiently sitting here and listening to me yammer on and on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Sluminski?
I guess I, first off, I want to start off by saying, uh, my district that I represent is on the east side of town. So I myself and my constituency as a whole, I have not heard a lot from regarding this. I don't use it a lot, Business 51. Obviously, I don't have a business on Business 51. So, you know, I'm kind of sitting back and watching all what's going on. I was here for the first round. What was that, 12?
It was a while ago.
The mayor and I were involved with that. It was an absolute disaster. Majority of, in my opinion, the majority of the, I guess, of the opposition was the South Side business owners. When this came to us back in 2019, I believe, in November of 19, when it was brought forward that we're going to start looking at this and, um, talking about hiring AECom, I pointed out and I was very adamant that we need to get these business owners involved with this discussion from the start. I went back and I watched the meetings. In November of 19, January of 20, and February of 2020, it was told to me over and over and over, we are going to make sure that what happened this, the first time was not going to happen again. We are going to get these business owners involved from the start. Not to say that they were going to get everything that they wanted, but we were going to at least get the business owners involved. We paid AECom over a million dollars to do this. Now, President Johnson was just praising how well they did and, and they did a good job. I'm not, I'm, I don't want to, they're the experts. I'm not arguing that's something that has to happen with Business 51. There is no doubt. I was a truck driver for 25 years and I had to drive down that road periodically. And I absolutely dreaded it when I had to because it is a dangerous corridor. What I am so upset about is, when I walked into this meeting last Monday, Board of Public Works meeting, when I pulled in the parking lot, I was expecting, because I knew it was on the agenda, I was expecting some cars. You know, I was expecting coming into, you know, a, a well-attended meeting. There was no one here. There was a few, I know Mr. Tesh testified and I think maybe one or two other people testified under that agenda item. I thought, wow, we did a good job this time. I, I was amazed and I'm like, this is great. Everybody, you know, again, not everybody's going to get everything they want, but at least issues were hashed out, you know, concerns were brought up. My phone ran off the hook last week. Of all the people that were so upset. Out of all the speakers tonight, a third of them were these South Side business owners saying we were not involved. I, I don't know how many business owners told me, they didn't know anything about this. Now granted, Director Badun said that he went and they hung out door hangers, they were announcing on Facebook. I was under the assumption that, that we were going to avoid what happened last time. We were going to specifically go out and reach out to these business owners to make sure that they were involved in the beginning. We were going to have these stakeholder meetings. It was said by, by, um, Amy with AECom that we were going to create stakeholder meetings to get these businesses involved. And now look at where we're at tonight again. I am so disappointed in this process. I'm embarrassed. Now again, I know something has to be done with this corridor. I'm not arguing that. This corridor has safety issues. But the way we've ditched on these people, these business owners on the South Side, it's embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Schor?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Honestly, I, I, I'm truly sorry to, to see this become so politically divisive and, and scratching my head in maybe a similar way as Alder Sluminski. As, as President Johnson explained, yeah, this, this project has, has a big price tag. And, uh, it's because the work needs to be done and that, uh, that is true whichever way we go. We need the federal support in, in order to do whatever we're going to do. And that's what's so frustrating about the political division. No matter how you slice it, this project doesn't fit comfortably into our city budget. Which is why President Johnson's point about wanting to, you know, have our fair share of the federal taxes we pay help with these costs. We're really talking about three roads rather than one, right? This isn't, this isn't one single stretch. There's the north end, there's the residential middle, and there's the south end, which we've been talking about an awful lot tonight. I mean, I'm just noticing, we did hear some comments from residents on, on that residential middle section. We talked a lot more about the southern end than, than the northern end. And, um, I guess, I guess, uh, confusion maybe is what I'll voice along with some others in terms of, um, what this means for the southern end. You know, this is supposedly, um, blocking, you know, you're closing any entrances for some businesses. That's not how I understand it from Public Works Department. The, uh, but, you know, the, the, uh, here's another thing that's confusing. There's destinations and there's impulse, right? That's the basic breakdown. There's, there's where I'm going because I'm a customer, that's on my list to go. And then there's, um, hey, why don't I stop there, right? I mean, you're all business owners. You get, you understand this better even than I do. Well, um, I'm hearing different things from comments tonight and from our staff, right? Comments tonight, I'm hearing, well, um, we're, we're losing our access point. We're, we're, people aren't going to be able to get into our premises from Division. What I hear from staff is that there are two specific businesses where that is very much a problem. One, um, is not currently, is in between owners. So, um, the point about destination versus impulse is that, uh, if, if your customer is, you know, knows you, and you're your customer, um, they're coming to you. And, um, like I say, there's, we, we understand that there's only two places where a customer can't get in. And the point about an impulse business is that, um, they're not headed to you and you want them to go slower so that maybe they'll turn in, right? So that's, that's, um, that's a little confusing to me, I have to say. But that's the southern end. We heard people from the middle residential piece, um, which I totally understand, you know? That's, that's just not a comfortable space between, and those are all residences in that middle stretch. That's not a comfortable space to be sidewalk with the traffic right there. I represent more towards the north personally. And, um, here's one of the main points that I want to make. Compare North Division and downtown. Downtown is more occupied with businesses than it has been. And the way I think many of us look at it, that's no coincidence with how traffic is slowed down. So I was saying a minute ago, impulse versus destination. You got a narrower Main Street, parking on, taking up a lot of that space. Meanwhile, on North Division, all those students there who could be spending money. You've got, you know, one empty lot, just, the, the, Ella's, you know, just sitting there for how long now, right? Looking at, at downtown, looking at, it looks to me to, to say exactly what we understand, which is that, you know, when things are set up for people to drive through and just, you know, kind of go and pass, that's what they'll do and people won't want to walk there and spend money, right? So some questions about the southern end, but the northern end, um, you know, we have a, I think, a pretty good picture of why it's important to take all of those students who, by the way, are cut off from North Division, right? And there's that parking lot and that's, that's why we just bought the laundromat, is to open that up. Got new residences coming in. So, you know, um, So, you know, um. You know the old warning, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. Well, I wanna say if it sounds, with this debate, right, if it sounds too crazy to be be true, then maybe it isn't, right? I think what we're trying to say is, and I'm saying it most clearly about that Northern End. Is that we have a reason, a business reason. This is a group of people, believe me, who is very concerned about our tax base. And and we look at North Division and we see that space next to the bank, you know, now cleared. Nothing's been done with it. Uh and uh we believe what we've seen in, you know, in communities other places. Which is when you slow, when you, you know, make it not just a place for people to drive through. And you actually um. Get people to go slower so they're not just speeding by. And that's. And then make space, we talk all the time about, but. Yes, people use bicycles to get around more than we, you know, more than some people realize. But here's the other important point. One purpose that those bicycle lanes serve is to make pedestrians more comfortable on the sidewalk. We're gonna have to disagree, agree to disagree about all the times we heard tonight that bicycles belong on sidewalks. I'm sorry, everything that people say, police departments about safety and, you know, business says. You don't wanna put the bicycles with people who are trying to walk. They should have space in between pedestrians and cars. So. I don't know. I don't know why it's so hard for people to to believe that the roundabout will be good for safety. Streets are safer when drivers have to pay closer attention, right? Hey, I'm I'm a little bit of an expert on on it, on attention. I mean, I I take meds for for ADD. But um. Wider lanes, more space for drivers, swooping makes it easier to drive fast, and narrower lanes, tighter traffic circles, sharing. Makes everybody, drivers, pedestrians, bike users, be more careful. You know, the more I hear people say, you know, the bikes are the problem, you need to keep, you keep them away from drivers to keep them safe. That doesn't make drivers sound very safe, right? I mean, you can't just make bike users scapegoats for all the safety problems. Anyway, um I've said enough, I'll take one more second to say in terms of. Like what the people, right? I heard from a handful of constituents. I also heard from non constituents and they are welcome and I appreciate the chance to engage with two business owners in particular. But we shouldn't, you know, since many of them were in contact with all Alders, we shouldn't like double and triple and eleven times count them, but. So I heard from about four or five constituents uh in favor, two or three opposed, but I don't wanna make too much of that. What I really wanna say is. We can't know how it all adds up with with public opinion, right? I mean, um how many many people were here? That's one slice. People pay polling companies like a lot of money to do scientific samples. But um I do not only take all the calls, I return all the calls, I read everything everybody has to say. The reason that I got a little upset earlier tonight was that we do try and have a respectful discussion in everything we do. I see a head shaking. Hi, I've been here for five years or whatever. I return every call I get, I listen to everybody who wants to be in touch. And all I mean to say about that is that. These various slices of opinion, we can't know how it all adds up to what everybody thinks, so we kinda do our best to figure it out. And I guess I'll I'll just finish and thank you for the time by saying we do our best at that. We approach, we take our responsibilities seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna make one point of clarification because it's been said twice already. There is no design that specifically precludes us from any federal or state transportation funding, whether it's grants or otherwise. No design precludes us from doing that. And who do we have next? Alder Nibone?
Well, I'm not a transportation engineer, but I am an urban planner, or at least I was until I retired. In my mind, we have a corridor right now that panders to cars. We have people walking, we have people biking, we have moms with strollers and dads with toddlers in hand. We have kids on skateboards and kids roller skating. We're trying to make a corridor that works for everybody. And one of the ways to do that is just to make it safer, and to make it safer, you slow speeds. Again, this isn't about bikes, it's all about safety. Making the best corridor we can for this city going into the future. Um I strongly support the conversion from four to three. It's not two lanes, it is three lanes. There's shared driveways in the businesses all along Highway Ten, it doesn't seem to stop anybody from pulling into Clover, um Culvers or Skis Meat Market or Harbor Freight or Burger King. I'm sure some of those issues can be addressed. One thing I keep hearing is that nobody knew anything. I know nobody knew anything about the ATV route because everybody said that tonight. I would like to see if Director Badun could clarify for me. How notices were sent out. I believe. Things were hand-delivered, I believe all the businesses got postcard notices of meetings, and I think it's not fair to denigrate our department director without having some input there. We have been told for years to trust city staff. They have the expertise. I'm not a transportation engineer, I trust AECom, I trust our Public Works Director and his staff. To do the right thing for the city of Stevens Point, just like I trust Director Lemke and Director Kramer and Director Kornoski and Chief Finn and Chief Zener. To put the best interest of this community first. And I think Director Badun and his staff and AECom have done that. Thank you.
Thank you, and just another point of clarification, I asked the director to put all of the public participation comments in the handout that everyone should have gotten. They are available on our website along with a seventy-four megabyte document outlining all of the public participation, that's available at StevensPoint.com. Anyone else? Alder Leek, and then Dalton?
Primarily, I'd like to um concur with what President Johnson said, I really couldn't improve on that. There is this this question of finances and federal funding. Safety is also quite important, I very much identify, I'm sorry, I forgot Allison, I believe, was the first name, I didn't catch your last name. I too have personally come close to getting run down on several occasions crossing that street, very memorably. And I also welcome the comparison with Downtown from Alder Shore, that's a, that's a well-chosen comparison. And another comparison might be Highway Ten, as as Alder Nibone brought up, last week I wanted to get a fish dinner and I did not get a fish dinner. And I did not get a fish dinner from Culvers because of poor traffic design. I could not make that left turn uh at dinnertime, so um you know, I do not, I do not necessarily believe that uh. More, let's move it this way, good engineering makes better use of the resources that we have. And the engineers that we have working on this are are excellent and I do not believe that um. Yeah, yeah, maybe if we had AECom on that on that Culvers turn, I I wouldn't have been hungry that night. That's all.
Thank you. Alder Dalton?
Thank you. Um representing the West Side of the the community and most of my residents move across this uh this thoroughway on a regular basis to get anywhere in town. Um and I want to appreciate that many of the comments that I received outside of this um uh meeting tonight were from those families of young people who are crossing to go to school at Jefferson and PJs. And that's a daily part of their routine in life to also access parks. Um and so I um appreciate everyone's comments and time here tonight, but um also want to recognize that many of the people that aren't here tonight are exactly those families who can't unfortunately sit here with kids until eleven o'clock at night. And so I wanted to to make that point and also um receive a lot of phone calls from the business owners on the South Side, I'm also a business owner on the South Side. And um and really appreciate the concerns that they raised and um it was asserted to me that there was going to be a raised median in the South Side. And that really made me double take and double check and reconfirm that there isn't, there is a two-way left turn lane, so. Though there will be less uh one, you know, one traffic moving in each lane, that really um supports uh the idea for me that this will support business, um business life there. I own a business in another community that is on a business corridor and unfortunately, ten years ago, they redid it just four lanes without a left turn lane and that was really a difficult part of uh and is a difficult part of operating that business and so. All the more um supporting my belief that this will be a business-friendly environment, so thank you.
Thank you. Alder Morrow?
Um I wanna echo what Alders Lewinsky was saying, because um we had been talking about this for the past three years and we've been to numerous community meet, meet, meetings and so on. I rep, I represent the far North Side, which is like um, that is a north point in, North Point in, North Point in Division Street, which is also where the, with which is also where the roundabout is. And there was talk that that would just be pure, like, a death, death out, that would that be pure death out there with Spash and so on. And that is the best thing that that intersection has. I mean, the traffic flow's great, I use it every single day. I mean, the kids go in and around and they've learned how, they've learned how to also use that and it flows wonderfully. I mean, those, that roundabout's a great asset. I mean, there's no more lights where the kids are, where where the kids are completely backed up. Traffic is not backed up at all if you're coming off the highway. I mean, that roundabout's a godsend really. And so um I think I talked to Mr. Flatoff when he called me as well and I said, bring the business owners down. Because in, because just until that that point, I assumed everything was was fine, because of all the meetings we've had for the past three years. And we've had the input and so on and P and folks had also talked, talked to the North Side business, oh, uh North Side business owners which are in my area. And everything was fine. So I assumed the same thing was, I thought that it was the same thing for the South Side as well. But in regard to the roundabouts, I mean, just the experience with that one, I mean, I think it would be very beneficial, there's no problems with the with with the students. No problems with bikers, hikers, dog walkers. I mean, it's great. And all the carnage that folks said was gonna happen never actually occurred. So at this point, I I mean, this is a vote to approve the planning for thirty percent, this is not a vote to approve everything. I mean, so there's still, there are still going to be planning, there's still gonna be adjustments made. There's still going to be a lot of stuff done on this, so this is not a final vote that we're gonna start to tear things up on Monday. So I think that we should proceed with, I think that we should proceed to plan on this. Because nothing is set in stone yet, this is planning, this is what the vote is, to continue with the planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief.
Alder Keemer?
I've been following this project closely for quite some time before I even considered running for council. My family and I live a block from Division and we travel along it and cross it every day. I served on the stakeholder group for this project for over a year and I attended countless information sessions and public meetings. And I agree with what Alder Shore said, this really is three different roadways and we heard a lot about the Southern End, not a lot about the Northern. And where I live and the community that I represent is this central residential area and it is overwhelmingly residential, I think there's two businesses in my district total. It is a high-density district, it's the smallest in size and it has the same amount of people as the others, or at least it used to. Where I live, this roadway is not a highway, it's Division Street and it literally divides the Jefferson community who must cross it multiple times a day. My kids who live, friends that live on the other side of Jefferson, they have, you know, games on the other side of Jefferson, it divides my neighborhood from downtown. It divides us from the public library and the post office, it divides us from the riverfront, from the city and county offices, it divides us from the YMCA and the city parks. Roads are for people, they connect people to places and I think the families with young children, the professionals, the seniors and the students who live in that area. Need a safer way to travel and cross the street. So I guess that's just, you know, overwhelmingly, that's what I heard from my constituents. I have heard from a handful of people outside of the area, but overwhelmingly, the people that I heard from are for this because they want to be able to participate on the other side of the city in a safer and easier way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think every Alder has had a chance to speak, uh I think we should recess for about ten minutes, that, I was pulling a Jeff, Jeff Probst, the survivor, we'll be right back after these messages. But before we call the vote, I wanna say a couple of things, I wanna touch on a little bit more of what Alder Morrow had talked about, because Joe, I saw you had a question or a comment earlier after the public hearing or the public speaking part was done. If anybody has comments or questions, this is not the be-all, end-all, either way, anyway. You still have the opportunity to provide input, contact your Alder person, contact Director Badun. Um I think it's warrants after tonight's meeting that we have at least an additional informational meeting, uh maybe try more specifically to make people aware of it, but this is not it. This is a vote that moves us to the thirty percent design. That doesn't mean it's set in stone what you see outside there, that doesn't mean that modifications won't be made, they will, I can guarantee you that. I wanna thank everybody for showing up tonight, uh and I wanna especially thank the vast majority of people who were very respectful and courteous and cognizant of everybody else's time and opinions regardless of how you felt. This is what government should be. And with that, I am going to have a ten-minute recess after the vote to give everybody time to stretch and to clear out, but I would also encourage you to stay for our second half of the agenda and share our excitement. As we progress through the next half of the agenda.
We're gonna be spending millions of dollars in the next half, so pay around for that.
Another pile of millions of dollars. So, Clerk. The motion is to approve going forward with the thirty percent, up to the thirty percent design. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and Clerk Yentor will call that roll.
Sure.
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewinsky?
No.
Nibone?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
We have a nine-one, the motion passes, and with that, we stand in recess for ten minutes. We will reconvene the regular common council meeting and the next few items. Uh as a matter of fact, most of the rest of the agenda is dealing with money. I wanna remind people that we don't need to restate the entire agenda item in an attempt to be brief, but if you choose to, we will allow you to speak, um just like we've allowed everyone else. Corey, we have an update on the two thousand twenty-two capital budget.
Yes, so as you might remember, last week we presented the capital budget. Uh and in the interim, we were able to find a little bit uh extra for road construction, which as we mentioned was a a concern that. Uh that's been somewhat flat over the past couple of years, so we were able to find an extra two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to put into road construction. So I have been working with Director Badun, he definitely has a big list of of roads that need it and projects that can be done. But did wanna make sure that we gave you that update as soon as possible since obviously in October, uh you know. Uh, you know, that is typically when the finance committee and council would, uh, vote on the capital budget. So, and the memo is included, as well as I also included a breakdown as far as the number of miles per year that's included. Uh, and where we should be, uh, in comparison to where we are. I know that that was also brought up. I think it'd be kind of tough to get into that at eleven o'clock at night.
Thank you.
But certainly, it, it is included in your packet for your review.
Thank you. Any questions for Cory? Okay, we'll move along. Um, we don't need a vote on that, so we'll move to item number sixteen, which is the initial resolution authoring, authorizing the sale and issuance of stormwater system revenue bonds and certain related details. Those were included in your packet. Cory, anything to add?
Yes, we do have Greg Johnson on for Eller, from Ellers. He did stick with us for this whole meeting, so.
Did you really listen to all of that?
Oh, my gosh.
I did.
Wow.
Are we actually being built for that?
So Greg, uh, do you have anything that you'd like to say since you stuck on this long?
I'll just kind of give a very brief overview of kind of the, all the items that are kind of on the agenda related to the, to the financing. Uh, so the, the first item that's on the agenda is, uh, the initial resolution for the sale of the stormwater management bonds. Uh, these are revenue bonds. Uh, they do not count towards the city's general obligation debt limit. Um, it is funding, uh, stormwater-related improvements related to some of the other infrastructure projects that are in, uh, the city's capital plan or being funded through the general obligation debt issue, which is related to other items on, on your agenda. Um, you know, we've included our, our pre-sale reports that kind of provide the general financial analysis and proposed, uh, structure, uh, of the bonds, uh, for the stormwater revenue bonds. Uh, one of the main requirements we need to demonstrate to legally issue the bonds is that we meet what's called the debt service coverage test. Uh, we've been conservative and just looked at the city's 2020 audited results, uh, for the stormwater utilities and shows that it meets the, uh, additional bonds test, uh, to issue these revenue bonds in terms of having adequate coverage to cover the debt service payments. Uh, so we're kind of starting the debt issuance process this evening. Uh, this initial resolution, um, is kind of, uh, starting the process, allowing, uh, the city and us at Ellers to, uh, proceed with, uh, the issuance of the debt. Uh, in terms of the timing, uh, for the debt issuance, uh, the sale is scheduled to occur on November fifteenth, the date of a, uh, regular scheduled common council meeting. Uh, it's at that meeting that the final interest rates will be presented and the final award will be considered by the common council. So it's kind of an overview of the stormwater revenue bonds.
Thank you, Greg. Again, comments?
I'll move approval of the initial resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Morrow. Discussion is killing me. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
It's so easy to spend other people's money. Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
I tax dollars.
Oh, did you call me? I didn't hear.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
That's approved. Item number seventeen is the initial resolution authorizing the issuance not to exceed three million six hundred and sixty thousand in GO bonds for street improvements and light, street lighting.
So moved.
Thank you, Niebone. But thank you, Dalton, for the second. Discussion. Alder Morrow.
Um, does that include, uh, some of that smart street lighting that we had that presentation on?
Funny you should ask, but we're working on some of that.
And so, yeah, for clarification, this is to fund 2021 capital projects. So projects that have either already occurred, um, or are gonna be completed later this year. So what was proposed in capital is for 2022 capital, uh, so that we would borrow for that next year.
Which would include the, those smart street?
Yes, we did do some work, thanks to Alder Leek and, uh, his connections. We did some testing with some smart lighting.
Yeah, but, but this borrowing does not include the smart lighting. That would be next year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Uh, that is approved. Item number eighteen is the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $65,000 in GO bonds for parking lots. Motion by Fishler, seconded by Dalton. Checking the speaker list. No, nobody signed up to speak for this one. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Uh, that's approved. Item number nineteen is the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $100,000 in GO bonds for fire engines and other equipment for the fire department. Alder Niebone, seconded by President Johnson. Discussion. Still no speakers. Alder Morrow.
I mean, a hundred thousand dollars wouldn't even buy half a truck.
So, uh, so basically, the titles of these resolutions are based on their statutory purposes. So basically, if it falls into that category, that's where you get that title from, but that is actually mainly fire equipment.
Thank you.
Yep.
But we are gonna get a little matchbox-type fire. No, we're not. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number twenty is initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $105,000 in GO bonds for facilities for fire protection apparatus or equipment for fire protection. Alder Keemer is first, and Slawinski's the second. Discussion. Still no speakers. Okay. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number twenty-one is another initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $225,000 in GO bonds for refuse disposal.
Alder Morrow, so, so moved.
Motion by Morrow, seconded by Keemer. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, get a roll call, please.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Approved. Item number twenty-two is an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 640,000, I'm sorry, $460,000 in GO bonds for parks and public grounds. That was, that was quick on both of you. We're gonna give the first to Dalton, the second to Fishler. That was really quick. I appreciate that. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, get a roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number twenty-three is another initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,525,000 in GO bonds for providing financial assistance to blight elimination, slum clearance, community development, redevelopment, and earl, urban renewal programs and projects. It's a mouthful. Alder Zerazua, motions, seconded by Johnson. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
That is approved. Item number twenty-four is an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $1,090,000 in GO bonds, uh, GO refunding bonds. What? Cory looked at me weird.
No.
Oh, sorry. Moved by Dalton. Maybe my glasses, I don't have the glasses on. So moved by Dalton.
I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion.
Oh, no, I don't. Sorry, actually. I'm good.
Okay, clerk, roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
And that is approved. Another checkbox on tonight's agenda, a resolution authorizing and directing the publication of notice and of the adoption of the initial resolutions, basically giving us permission to publish what you just did.
Motion.
Motion by President Johnson, seconded by Slawinski. Discussion. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
And that's approved. You know, I gotta tell you, when the clerk calls the roll, she goes from top to bottom and bottom to top. Every other one, she rotates. So when I ask her if she calls, she could call the roll, and she says, sure! Seriously, I did twice. Twenty, twenty-six is, is a resolution authorizing and providing for the issue, uh, issuance of not to exceed $9,230,000 in GO corporate purpose bonds, providing for the notification and sale of said bonds and other related details.
Alder Morrow, so, so moved.
Okay, and was that a second, President Johnson? Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number twenty-seven, the highlight of our evening, is the presentation and interview for First District alderperson candidates and subsequent appointment. Um, so the process that we have, uh, is going to be, we have two candidates that requested, uh, consideration, and they are both here tonight. Um, we will give the floor to each of them, uh, to provide some background, but the information in your packet, uh, was should be, should have been provided for you or to you, um, in regards to the two candidates. At that point, after their presentations, we will have an opportunity for asking questions from the common council. And then we will vote. The clerk and the treasurer are our, um, agents for the votes. We have, uh, everyone is here, so we will all do paper ballots. And in the event that we have, uh, a majority on our first vote, we will have a new appointee. Should there be a tie on the first vote, um, we will give each candidate another brief time to explain themselves. And we will have another vote. Explain, that's probably a bad choice of words. Um, and we will have another vote. In the event of a tie a second time, I will reserve the right to break that tie. Understood? Um, with that, um, Cory, I suppose, do you happen to have a coin or something? We could, uh, choose which candidate goes first. The treasurer, the treasurer doesn't have a.
Irony, irony.
Ironic.
Just issue a bond for it.
Mark and Stephen, if you guys could come forward, please. Um, we're gonna do it right here, because I'm too lazy to walk all the way around. Alder Niebone, you are my witness.
Uh-oh.
Okay, you will call it in the air. Heads it is. You have the option of either going first or second. Your choice.
I'll go first.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask both candidates to go to the lecturn. You know, half-assed about putting that in my pocket.
You can have my quarter, actually.
Um, let's, uh, let's try and keep it to under three minutes.
All right, I'm Stefan Klein. Um, I've lived here most of my life. I moved away when I was about eighteen. I came back when twenty-six-ish. Um, my family has been here since nineteen oh five, um, predating most of our major structures here in Point. Um, there's a reason I moved back here. Um, it's a great place to live. I want to keep it a great place to live for my kids, so that they will come back here. If you have any questions for me, I don't feel like I had more to say, but.
Thank you. We reserve the right then to bring you back up and, and if the council has questions.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank you for your service. I'm also a veteran, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen.
You guys have seen me a few times before. Um, Mark Christensen, um, I guess my background has been one, I guess, of service pretty much through, through most of my life. I went into education, um, found, you know, that that was a way that I could help, uh, help others and, and taught for only six years. They talked me into going into administration. I went into, uh, became an elementary principal, did that for nineteen years. And then spent the past, spent fourteen years after that as a, as a school superintendent. I do think that the past experience was, was helpful. I obviously have a pretty good understanding of, of millevies and budgets and, and, uh, I've, as part of my personal and professional life, have been parts of many boards and councils in the past. I was, when I was up in Washburn, was on the city council there. Ironically enough, uh, we undertook the largest infrastructure project in the history of that community. In a town of two thousand, we did a twelve-point-four million-dollar water and sewer infrastructure project. Our infrastructure was such that thirty-eight percent of the water never made it to a faucet. It was sad. Um, we did have a lot of, uh, public interest in our project as well, because it was gonna result in raising their, their water bills. It went up to slightly below the state average for communities our size, even with, um, that project. We were fortunate enough to receive a $5.4 million RDA grant, rural development grant, that at the time was the largest for a community that size in the state of Wisconsin. So a lot of what I see going on here, it seems, it brings back memories, and most of them good. But in a project that size, it's always so important to make sure you do it well. You kind of have one shot. And so it's, uh, it'll, it'll be a major investment, but I, I do think it's, it's gonna be valuable. I have had a lot of experience, obviously, in, in my various roles of, of getting out and meeting the public. When I did become the superintendent out at Rochelle, I initiated a process. I would meet with each of the town boards annually and give them kind of a state of the school and give them a chance to ask questions. And so I'm pretty, I'm comfortable going out there and, and meeting with people, getting, uh, input from them and trying to utilize that. I do though know also that sometimes you have to do what's right, not necessarily what's popular. And that's not always the same thing. Um, but it's, uh, I am look, I, I do think my experience and expertise would lend itself well to, to being in addition to your group. And I'm planning on being in this community for the rest of my life. Um, the, we bought a house and spending a lot of time working on that. Uh, being married to an architect means you're never done doing that, but they might bury me in the backyard, I don't know. But I love Stephen's point. My, uh.
Need a conditional use for that.
Yeah, I, I, you do, actually. I know. Um, both my sons graduated from UWSP and, and I love the area. Love being here, and I'm hoping to, to be able to do whatever I can to help, uh, this community keep on being a great place to be.
Thank you. Any of the alders have questions for either of the candidates?
I have one.
Let's start with Alder Shore first, and, uh, we'll give everybody the opportunity. How's that? We'll start, we'll start on this end and go. Candidates, when you address the council, please go to the lecturn, because that's where it's amplified.
We vote on all kinds of matters. I just thought I'd ask, what, you consider the core of the job, which decisions do you view as being essential? You know, just your perception of our role? And then, whether you have any personal priorities, issues, things that you would, if you came onto the council, be trying to persuade the rest of us to do? Any pet issues? So, the first question was about the way you understand the, the essence of, of what we do. And the second, you know, kind of a preview of maybe something that you'd wanna push.
And if it's okay with council, we'll just rotate, since you went second last time. You can go first this time.
I see a, a council's role is, as, you're, it's kind of, it's two-pronged. You're an advocate for the people in your area, and so there are certain things, but you also have to be able to, to take a look and keep in mind the greater good of the community as a whole. And sometimes what's best for your own district might not be what's best for the community as a whole, and I'm kind of familiar with that when I was a, a building principal, and you're part of that administrative team, it's the same type of a function in that sometimes you, we're always gonna be dealing with, with limited funds, and finances are obviously gonna be a driving force in, in all of the decisions, and finances are always going to be tight, and it'd be nice to be able to do everything, and you can't. And so, part of it, part of, I think, the, the real struggle for a, a council is, is prioritizing and come up with those priorities, knowing the things that, that have to go to the top of the list, and sometimes things have to wait a little bit longer, and some of the things that you end up having to support might not be a direct benefit to, to your district specifically, but if it helps move the community as a whole forward, then that's part of working together as a council.
Thank you.
So, the job as alder is, of course, to manage the functions of the city, like any other business, more or less. Some of my pet projects, or major interests, would be protecting interests of the small businesses in the community. Being someone who owns two small businesses myself, my wife owns a small business, my dad owns a small business, my grandpa owned Frank's. So, it's keeping businesses healthy and their interests is very important to me, while also helping with the other interests as well. Another major issue that I see is, there have been a lot of moves towards cleaning up neighborhoods, and a lot of the policies were intended to target slum lords in particular, and in my experience as a contractor, what I've seen is it instead targets lower-income households and makes it very hard for them to improve their properties. It makes it very hard for people to move into Stephen's Point and pick up that starter home, because they can't improve on that home. And so, I really wanna be able to get more involved in that.
Thank you. You probably stay up there. Alder Keemer?
Yeah, I just wanna state for the public record that I do know Stefan fairly well. He spent a few months doing a lovely remodel in my kitchen, and I think he still has keys to my house, so I do not have- Yeah, I don't have a personal financial stake in, you know, this outcome, but I did want to share that publicly. I guess my question for both of the candidates is just, what have you done to prepare for this role, and I guess what would you continue to do to sort of learn the ropes and prepare for this position?
So, preparation sadly not as much as I would have liked. I decided I was gonna go for this position back in July. I thought I had two years to prepare, and that wasn't necessarily the case. I'm hoping that I'll be able to work closely with my fellow alders to get up to speed with everything. Because frankly, I, I thought I had two years to prepare.
Okay, Mr. Christensen?
I guess part of my preparation, most, a lot of my experiences has been, seem to be preparing for this, but specifically in preparation for, for this role, I have been trying to attend almost all the committee meetings, all the council meetings in the, the last couple of months, trying to become acquainted with the specifics of each of the issues that are, are coming forward. I've had a chance to meet with Corey real quickly. I, Corey and I are in Rotary together, and so I, I've touched base with him, and if I am chosen, he has assured me he'd be willing to, to spend some time going through the, the budget with me. I, I do think finances obviously are, are key role to play. At the last public works meeting afterwards, I had a chance to, to meet with Director Badun very quickly, and, and he also assured me that if I was selected, that I would be able to, to touch base with him. I would like to do that with each of the department heads, just to kind of get their sense of things that they see as priorities and things that they would like to work on, and also just to be able to have some, somewhat of a personal relationship, so if I do talk to them, that they, they know who I am and where I'm coming from too. So, I guess that's kind of some of the preliminary work I've done. I've also been reaching out to some of the, the, more of the people in, in the neighborhood, and some, some of the business owners in District One, just to get their sense of, of where they see things and, and some thoughts of how we could proceed to try to, to do some things. One of my goals, one of my roles has been historically, has been kind of as a bridge builder, and I think that's part of being a number four out of six kids, and I was always kind of the, the peacemaker, and, and so I've tried to do that in each of the organizations that I've been part of, and I've been pretty successful. I, I find that, that none of us are as smart as all of us, and the more people and the more perspectives you can draw from, the best chance of reaching the, the best solution, so, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Klein. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, stay there. And Zara Zua?
Complicated question, easy question. It's eleven forty at night.
And I haven't had coffee for a long time.
I just told my wife that she doesn't need to keep dinner warm for me. How's that?
I, I have sympathy for you in this position. I was, I became alder in this room under the same kind of a interview process. Why do you want to subject yourself to this?
You know, I must be a blend for punishment, because I've got, I've been on city council before, I've, and I was a school administrator for thirty-three years. I guess it goes back. My sons both graduated the degree in education, and, and they asked me, I asked them, I said, why did you go into teaching? Did you think I pushed you into it? And they said, no, if anything, you probably kind of dissuaded us from doing that. And I said, so, why did you both become teachers? And my oldest looked at me, and he said, why did you become a teacher? I said, I guess because I thought I could make a difference. And he said, Dad, you did make a difference, and that's why we went into education. I think I've been in this role before, and I, it's one you choose, and it, and it, it is thankless. But you also know that you have a chance to make a difference. And so, sometimes you have to be thick-skinned, 'cause when I was on, I'll, I'll be honest with you, when I was on city council up in Washburn, during that, that infrastructure project, 'cause then that's, I've been on Water and Sewer Commission first, and then I got on the city council, and it got brutal, and there were personal attacks. I mean, there, and yet, you know, I, I never regretted it, and, and we, we, the community's a better place for it by far, and so you know that, yeah, there's gonna be a price to pay. There, there is, and, and you all know that as well as I do, but you also know that it can be really rewarding, 'cause you know that you've had a chance to make that difference, so, that's why.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
So, I literally started writing down glutton and, well, as, as it came out of his mouth, and it's like, well, I guess I can't use that. I guess I just don't know any better. I, I'm- Everything I've done, I've just dove in real deep. I started construction, and within a year, I started my own company. I climbed a tree in my backyard to, to limit, and now I own a tree service. I just, I, I started to get a little interest in this, and well, this is where it's leading. I, I've never done anything halfway, and I, I just, I go, I, I go all the way with what I typically do. I can complain about the things that I have issues with, or I can get involved and be a part of the process.
Thank you. Stay there. President Johnson?
First, thank you to both of you. It is a thankless job, and you don't get paid enough, clearly, after this time, but my question is, you know, it was a very long night, obviously, and contentious at times, but it's what democracy is, right? And, but the other part of democracy is, is our, our right to vote, and this council has over the last, I don't know, four or five years, we have invested in drop boxes, and we've invested in having staff to provide additional hours right here in this room for early voting. Were these, were these wise investments in, in success points for the other part of democracy, public participation, of course, the, the wonderful, amazing opportunity to vote?
Well, voting is, of course, important. The more locations you can add, the better. A very busy schedule, two businesses, kids. So, more opportunities is better, so long as the precautions are taken to make sure that those votes are legitimate and secure. More is better, and when you limit it to one day, you do make it very difficult for certain people to show up. So, drop boxes are not necessarily a bad thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen?
I think accessibility to, to an election is, is key. I, I think you want to have as many people involved in the, the voting process as possible. Now, along with that, you want your electorate to be as well-informed as possible. Jefferson said that the key to democracy is a well-informed electorate. So, you, you wanna make sure that the information's getting out there, that people are, are able to make good choices, because they're, they're well-informed, and they're able to, to make the right choice. That being said, I think drop boxes were, were very helpful. I voted early, just because I, I knew that that, the day, the election day was gonna be a tough one for me to, to get there, so I, I like the fact that people were given that flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Slawinski?
Well, mine will be simple. You guys said that you both are, you know, here tonight, 'cause you wanna make a difference. I guess, is there any specific thing in the next seven months that you would like to really, you know, really push for and accomplish, either in the district or citywide?
I think tonight's pretty much, it's pretty, pretty obvious that what's gonna be a, the biggest priority in the, in the next, next two years. It's not just gonna be the next six months. And, and as I said earlier, it's, it's huge. It's a huge project, and it's gonna be really important to make sure that it's done well, as well as possible, and, you know, in hindsight, you're probably gonna, five years from now, think, I wish we would have done this just a little bit on the water and sewer project. That, that we, we had a line going across, and we actually had two water lines serving, going up the same thing, and we're splitting off, and we could have gone a different route, going across a platted road during a, in a vacant area that would have led, you know, after it was all said and done, it's like, could have used that for development. It would have been, could have had, it was basically a six one-half dozen to the other, and so, this project's probably gonna be similar to that, too. There may, maybe some things, five years from now, that you wish we had thought of, but, boy, I hope we don't leave any stones unturned, because it, it's gonna be important.
Thank you. Klein.
So, of course, the highway is the big project. There is a few things that I would like to consider there, but next seven months, the first thing that I thought was, government doesn't move that fast. I mean, what actually happens in seven months? I mean, how long have we been talking about this highway project? Five, ten years? It's, it's all about small incremental changes, and it, it's, it's slower than that. So, seven months, nothing really stands out to me that is going to be changed in seven months. I don't think that's realistic for anything, really.
Thank you. Stay there. Alder Niebone?
I'll get it figured out by then or later.
I'm thinking you probably won't endure as much abuse from the public as you did in Marine Corps boot camp, if your drill instructor was anything like mine, anyway. I just wonder if, how much time you think this job really will take in a week or a month?
Probably one of my biggest concerns is just how many phone calls I might get when something like this agenda item comes up. Phone can get very annoying. It's going off all hours of the day as it is already. I have a very flexible schedule being self-employed. Obviously, you have the one meeting a month, but there's a lot of research that goes into making these decisions. So, I'm gonna say it's a lot. I, I honestly don't know exactly. Putting together bids and estimates for people and looking at countless jobs, just to try and keep a week busy at a time, it's, it sucks up way more hours than anyone could ever imagine. And this job, I'm sure, is just like that. What I think is gonna take an hour is gonna take a day. What I think will be done by ten will go until midnight. It's just the nature of it.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure. I know when I was in city council, the last time, I spent ten to fifteen hours a week, and, but I was working full-time. I do have, yeah, I'm just thinking, yeah, I'm retired, I'm busier than I was when I was working, but you find time. I'm, I'm guessing I would spend probably, I'm guessing fifteen, at least fifteen hours a week, because you're gonna wanna be able to, to get input and, and information from those, from the experts, you know, you, I always said, probably your most important job is getting the right people. You get the right people, and then you get them what they need, and then you get out of the way. You've done, I think, a great job getting, getting the right people. So, now our next task is to get them what they need, and then hopefully be able to just get out of the way. I did, you know, I, I'll be getting information, talking to people, looking things up, but that's okay, and fortunately, I'm, I am blessed with, with time, or I have a lot of things to do. Still gonna be working on the house, but they're flexible, and so I, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, as a member of council and a potential voter. I'm gonna ask, which alderpersons have you speak spoken to about your candidacy?
I've. Prior to commission, well, about my candidacy, really, I mean, I know there are some more aware that I was running. But I I I've spoken with a number of them. Not specifically on my candidacy. I know David from from playing tennis before. I was, we go back a long ways.
Ginger.
Why you don't know Paul Polly that way?
I met Mark Christensen at uh, the. The ECU. He attended the um. The District One, District Five, District Three accessory dwelling unit. But I didn't know you were running.
No.
I didn't know until I saw the.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Met her briefly there. McCura, I haven't had.
Just about the candidacy, Mark.
Candidates, about candidacy? I mentioned it, I think, to to Melissa. And I see Mary and Tom at at Transportation Commission, but I don't think I mentioned it there either, so. No.
Thank you. It's Klein.
So. I believe if memory serves correctly, because it's been a little while now. It was the day that. Tori resigned. I was at Ginger's house already.
He's in my kitchen.
In her kitchen. We had finished it just the day before, I think. And I was at, I had asked her some questions about the process and. I also called Alder Swinski. That day or the following day, I believe it was. Asking similar questions. And I had called one other. Later on. Similar questions. No one really had a lot of. Answers. And then. At the emergency meeting or. It was suggested not to talk to. With candidates, so I. Ended contact with everyone from there. And that's why I still have Ginger's keep because I felt it was inappropriate to. Uh, contact her until after now.
Thank you.
So.
Alder Lee.
So, uh, yeah, Mr. Klein, you'd mentioned that you want to um. Make the place an attractive uh, community for your children to to remain in. So, um, yeah, my daughter's off at college and uh, you know, uh, she's having a great time. She doesn't talk to me much, so. I guess, uh, she must be having a good time, so um. What is it that's gonna keep young people or maybe attract young people back and keep them here? What is it about a community that does that? And what would you like to do to make that happen?
A be a major part is. Community. The people. But you also need opportunity. Uh, if you don't have the business opportunities for. Graduates or uh, tradespeople or. Whatever they're going into, they need the opportunity to make a living moving here. They also need housing. They they need to be able to get into an affordable housing uh, house. Whether that's an apartment or a fixer-upper, and then they need the ability to see a future.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
I guess a lot of same things came to my mind as well. They they need to have housing. They need to have a place that where they can, they they need a job. They need um, something to do to bring in the income. I think the other third. Key piece is is education. And Stevens Point does have have good schools to to draw from, so. I I think that's kind of part of the the three main areas. I was thinking, too, when when on your question, although I didn't bring it up when we were walking downtown the one time. Where we saw Polly and and Orin. And my wife mentioned to to Polly that I was looking at putting my name in, so I I didn't. I didn't. So I did, I'm just saying, so. Yeah, I cuz, yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you. Alder Dalton.
Um, if you're not selected by this small body of people who you don't directly represent, would you be interested in running an election in the future?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's. That would be. That's. You know, if if I didn't, I I would think I would. Hard to say. That's a good question, though. I I think I probably would. I, you know, I I do think that that I have something to offer and to share, so I would try to put myself out there somehow. And I was, you know, even earlier, I'd put, that's why I'm on Transportation Commission and that type of stuff, even though it's not an elected position. You know, I I do wanna somehow contribute to the community, so.
Thank you. It's Klein.
As it turns out, yes, I do. Uh, have plans and running. Um, I already have an order for signings. So.
They get, stay up there. Alder Fisher.
So I was, uh, uh, well. I don't wanna say elected. I was elected later, but I went through this very same process that you guys are going through and it's very nerve-wracking, so thank you both for being here and um, volunteering to go through this process. Um, as to your question, it's kind of been on my mind tonight because of the fact that. This whole room was packed with people and we had the overflow room packed with people and it was about. You know, a couple of different items to talk about. One thing that I would like to know from both of you is, what are your ideas for more public involvement from people? Like, how do we keep people engaged? I think that's something that we we always struggle with.
Social media, I think, is. A great tool. Mike has been doing a great job with that. I believe. I've considered the thought of maybe at district meetings. I don't know how that works exactly with open meeting halls someday after. Door-to-door is a little unrealistic. Uh, for every. I think social media is really the the big one. No one gets the newspaper. Uh, not, not a. Not a quantifiable. Number of people at least. So it it doesn't. Carry the same impact. I think people really need to. Be connected with their. With their community and. Know their neighbors. That's. That's all I got on that. I mean, and I I know, I know a lot of my neighbors. I've worked for a lot of them. I've worked with them. We've been on that street since nineteen twenty. We moved to Point in nineteen oh five. But we've lived on that street. My parents still live in that house since nineteen twenty. We we know most of our neighbors. There's some new ones, but. Just gotta stay connected with the community. It within your district.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
I think I think you're right. I think social media is is one of the key. Players in all of it. I think a lot of it, though, is is just being visible and being out and about. I've always tried. To, no matter how in what role I was in, I always tried to be as visible as possible. Um, even when I was a superintendent. The my my predecessor. One of the students said, so who'd you take over for? And I said, well, so-and-so. They said, I thought he retired four years ago and he hadn't retired. He just. Was in the office and that was his his style. I always felt it was important to be out. In the in the halls and so between every class. I was out in the halls. I knew every kid by name. I get done giving, getting high fives, going up and down the hallway. That was fun. Um, I miss that a lot, but. Um, I think a lot was true in the same thing, even even in in a role like this. You know, I was trying to be as part of many different organizations, just I was out in the community a lot. And so you you just rub elbows with a lot of folks out there and you have a chance to 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 have that dialogue back and forth. So I. Social media is nice, but I still, I think there's a real important place yet for for face-to-face. And and I do hope to to be able to to do quite a bit of door knocking and get to know people and even that's just such a. But. I I think um. Whether it's at Rotary meetings or, you know, whatever type of things, um, the more people you get to. To know and and. Get input from, I think the better job you can do is a council person, is an alderperson.
Thank you. Yeah, see.
But I didn't.
Mr. Morrow.
I have ten things I wanted to ask. I got nothing. I say we vote.
Thank you both very much for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
I wanna, I think maybe if we could ask for guidance from the city attorney about spouse, you know, just.
Sure, we will, but I can tell you that we've talked about it. It's not gonna apply.
Excellent. Um, can I just say something nice to them?
You may say something nice.
So I'm gonna get myself in trouble. This this really stands out for me um, to people coming, you know, uh, for good reasons and bringing a lot. Um, it does remind me of when we were looking at uh, here. And so just wanted to. I'd be getting in trouble cuz it might, I don't remember if anybody else was, you know, you know, kind of running to that seat, but I really did want to say thank you. And I guess you're, I guess you're doing that beyond tonight.
Thank you. At least at least one of you is, probably both of you. So, um, clerk and comptroller, I would ask that you hand out ballots. Um, and pens, if you need one, you need to uh, raise your hand and we'll get you a pen. Um, there is a spot for the alderperson name. Now, Logan, do we need to put a name on there or can these be anonymous ballots? Then it's your choice. Choose the candidate. Uh, again, Mark Christensen or Stefan Klein. Um, so we will try to uh. You know, if you get the spelling wrong, we will try and figure it out and that'll be up to the clerk and the treasurer to figure out. Um, you do not need to identify yourself on the ballot and then are we gonna use this bucket? Immediately after. Actor is chosen, we will have a swearing in. There will be some shuffling of committees that need to go on and we already have a special council meeting set for next week. Imagine that. So we will add that approval. To next week's special counsel uh, for those committee assignments. And now I feel obligated to touch on it since Alder sure brought it up, uh, but one of the candidates is related to a current city employee. Again, it has no effect on the job. Um, there may be some potential recusals. Um, should an issue come up, but it is not an issue that we are, we need to be concerned about as far as the candidacy. All right, we got documentation uh. Materials. And at the lectern, um, call the names out as you pull them, please.
All right, first vote, Mark Christensen. Second vote, Mark Christensen. That's two votes, Mark Christensen. Third vote, Mark Christensen. Fourth vote, Mark Christensen. Fifth vote, Klein. So that's four votes, Christensen, one vote, Klein. Sixth vote, Stefan Klein. So that's four, Christensen, two, Klein. And Mark Christensen. So that's five votes, Christensen, two votes, Klein. Mark Christensen. Uh, Mark Christensen. So that's seven votes, Christensen, two, Klein. And the last vote is Mark Christensen. So eight votes for Mark Christensen and two votes for Stefan Klein.
Clerk, do you concur?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations, Mr. Christensen. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Uh, if you stay online, we are going to have uh, Mr. Christensen sworn in as the first district alderperson. Immediately, uh, again, committee assignments will come at special counsel next week. Thank you again. And our agenda is exhausted, but we are not going to adjourn yet until we uh, have the swearing in, yes. Uh, but let me be the first to say good morning. Uh, yeah, something like that.
You know that street wasn't gonna last long, Polly, you know?
Closer.
I know. That street wasn't gonna last long.
Ready, Carrie?
I'm ready.
Okay, you wanna do it at the lectern?
I just hadn't heard it.
Mark, I believe you're swamped.
Over by the lectern, alder-elect. And we're gonna get you on camera?
Sure.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Mark Christensen.
Who has been elected by the common council.
Who has been elected by the common council.
To the office of first district alderperson.
To the office of first district alderperson.
For a term effective September twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
For a term effective September twenty-first. Twenty twenty-one.
And expires April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
And expires April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
In the city of Stevens Point.
In the city of Stevens Point.
County of Portage, Wisconsin.
County of Portage, Wisconsin.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially just discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, District One Alderperson Christensen. With that, our agenda is exhausted and we are adjourned at about twelve ten AM on September twenty-first. Good morning.